Council Tuesday, December 31st. Please stand for our invocation led by Paton Bell, Jr., St. Joseph's Baptist Church, and remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
Let me thank you for this awesome day that you've given us, Lord. Thank you for the opportunity to come before this council to pray today, Lord God. We're starting the work of a new year, a new decade, Lord God. We ask your business upon the city of Mobile upon this council, Lord God. President Manzi, Vice President Small, Councilman Richardson, Williams, and Dave, and Councilwoman Best Rich and General Gregory, Lord. Now Mayor Sandy Stems, continue to ask your business, Lord God, and your business owner, God, every city leader, Lord God, and this power within this county of Mobile, Lord God. We just ask your business upon what you're going to do in 2022 Mobile, Lord God. We pray for unity, peace, Lord God. If we celebrate the moon pie drop this evening, God, we pray, God, that there are no incidents or accidents, Lord God. We pray your business upon the festivities this evening. In this name do pray, amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) the life of the United States of America and the general world for which it stands, one nation, on God, indivisible, omnipotent, infinite, endless.
Roll call, President Manzi, Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We first would ask that you would turn off or silence all electronic devices before or upon entering the council meeting. Any person designed to counsel must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the counsel, the speaker must clearly state for the record both his or her name and address. Any person designed to speak to the counsel on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak by 2:00 P.M. We ask that all your commentary be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Any person who hadn't given that notice will not be allowed to address their counsel. Each speaker is allowed five minutes to make their presentation. At the end of the fourth minute, a bell will sound that indicates that you have 60 seconds to summarize. The second bell notifies you that your time has expired. When addressing the counsel, we ask that there be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements ought to be made to myself, who serves as chair, and any council member who wishes to be recognized will have that opportunity. To maintain the quorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Those are the rules of the Mobile City Council meeting, and we're certainly appreciative of your interest in your municipal government. I'm City Clerk.
Approval of minutes of December 17th.
So moved.
Second.
We probably moved to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see everybody this morning. Hope you had a Merry Christmas. If you're looking forward to great 2020, I certainly am. I think the city is teed up to deliver services on a higher level than we've delivered in 2019, and the deal is we're always trying to do better, and we look forward to the opportunities for 2020. I would have to say, though, that I'm glad to Councilman Richardson. I'm very disappointed. I see that he's got his beads on, but I have my moon pie tie on, and I know he's got a moon pie tie on.
Not like that.
And I like this one? Okay, well, then maybe I need to give you my moon pie tie. So maybe I'm not disappointed in you. I will gift you my moon pie tie since you are Mr. Moon Pie. And for anybody that's in the audience tonight, if you're not there, I think that he's taking notes of who's going to be there and who's not. It's a great opportunity for family-friendly event, come downtown. So I hope everybody that's listening to this will take time to come down and join us in the celebration. At this time, on a different note, I'd like to call on Chief Clay Godwin and call Officer Blakely Miles to the podium. Officer Miles, if you would join the chief podium. Officer Miles is our officer of the month, and I will say that in the opportunity that I had to visit with him in my office a short time ago with his mom and his girlfriend, one thing that comes through, just kind of exudes through, it seems, every pore in his body is his passion for the job. He is the son of a policeman, and when I was asking about, when I asked him about, was this kind of a childhood dream? He said that he grew up around police officers, uncles, his father, and so forth. So again, it's a great opportunity for him to do something that he wants to do, but the City of Mobile is a beneficiary of somebody that is as passionate as he is. So Chief Godwin, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. It's my extreme pleasure to represent.
Not only the chief of police, Lawrence Batiste, but citizens of Mobile to recognize Officer Blakely Miles for an outstanding job during the month of November. I was talking to his mother earlier in the mayor's office, and she made a keynote that a lot of people don't realize, that you can't just put anybody in a police car and make them go out there and do the job. Really, all you can make them do is answer the radio for paperwork calls. They have to have a passion for the job and be proactive. If you look at the write-up, and I encourage all of you to read it in the paper today, it's very lengthy, all of his stops are proactive. They're led into guns, narcotics, all of it is from his keen observation of his job. And I would like to congratulate him on being Officer of the Month for the month of November 2019.
Well, I mean, I really don't have too much to say, but I do think I should say at least thank all of you guys for the opportunity and the experience and meeting with the mayor and then, you know, chief and director as well. I just appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
About it. Just thank all of you guys.
Thank you for your service.
So let the record show that Officer Blakely Miles is the first policeman to ever say anything in response to receiving this award. Congratulations. Thank you.
Come here.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick comment. During a time when police officers seem to be so quickly criticized, and I think always get an overdose of criticism, I think it's fitting that we do recognize the incredible work that's done that oftentimes goes unnoticed. And so the difficulty of getting quality police officers in this country for urban cities is well-known throughout our country. It's recognized by even by the President of the United States. But these guys, guys from our cities, from our towns, from our farms, and they come as ordinary people, but they come with an extraordinary sense of duty to protect those that cannot protect themselves. And I think we should just take a moment to really realize those unsung heroes that we have amongst us and thank the Lord every day that people like that do come and answer that call.
I certainly agree with you, Mr. Director. We have a fine cadre of public service responders, our first responders here at City of Mobile. I'm proud of this officer, proud of the officers that you all bring down here each and every month, and I agree with absolutely. We don't, we don't give the applause enough to those who do the job day in and day out. Thank you for what you've done and what you will do, and Happy New Year to you and your family. And it's just unfortunate that that one or two percent who rail against the rules and regulations have kind of jaundiced their profession in many respects. But you're held in high regard by this council, and we appreciate all that you all do.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on December 31st, 9:00 P.M. until 1:00 A.M. on St. Francis Street.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Public hearings today is a public hearing to resume property located at 1624 Springhill Avenue, north side of Springhill Avenue, 100 feet east of USA Children's and Women's Parkway from R1 to B2.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak during this particular public hearing? Tonight, the public hearing is closed.
Today is a public hearing to consider terminating all city services within the police jurisdiction.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak during this particular hearing? Tonight, the public hearing is closed.
Today is a public hearing to consider terminating all city services within the police jurisdiction.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak during this particular hearing? We're certainly glad to have Commissioner Connie Hudson with us, C-Commissioner Jerry Carl. Oh, and you would like, yes, sir, Mr. Sawyer?
Were we, did we have an order here? I know we signed in, so.
It's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing, so you all are welcome to come. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, members of the council.
Good morning.
And Happy New Year's Eve. My name is Connie Hudson. I reside at 128 Pine Needle Drive East in the City of Mobile, and I represent District 2 on the Mobile County Commission. And I realize that the proposed ordinance to terminate services in the police jurisdiction has been sent to committee and will be discussed and deliberated in a format, and I appreciate that. This is a very, very important decision that will have a long-term impact on the City of Mobile, and I think any such decision as that should be fully vetted and understood, all the facts should be understood. And then whenever you make a decision, just you feel confident and comfortable that you have been presented all the information and that what you're doing is for the best interest of the city, and I respect each and every one of you. I know you work hard. You, I've been where you are, so I understand what it's like, and I appreciate the fact that you are all doing your very best to represent the citizens who elected you and for the best interest of the city. As you go into deliberation, there are a few points that I would just ask that you consider. You received the letter that I sent yesterday. It kind of highlighted some of those points. One being, I think, you know, what I've heard through media is that there's going to be a big tremendous cost savings by terminating services in the jurisdiction, and I think it depends on the methodology used to calculate that figure. I know that the city has used one methodology. When we saw that figure, which was $26.6 million, we were blown away. That's a lot of money for that, for services in the jurisdiction, in that three-mile area. We looked at it. I asked our finance department. We've had communications with the communications district, sheriff's department, and in a short period of time, we're still putting numbers together, but what it appears to us, and this is based on a methodology that other jurisdictions use to calculate the cost of services, and that's using the number of service calls. And if you use that calculation to factor that in, the jurisdiction is actually, the revenues being produced that are sent to the city is $12.2 million. If you use that call volume number for your calculation, then it is very, very close, the amount of the cost in services. And I think we're boiling that down to an exact number, but if you add in administrative fees, it's less than a million dollars difference. And so, you know, I would just ask you to look at the methodology being used, to compare that, and just to make sure that the numbers that you've got, you're comfortable with. This is not, the citizens need to understand, this is no windfall money unless you're going to do across-the-board layoffs in different departments that have been, in the methodology we've seen, it adds percentages for departments, even outside agencies like the Health Department, Personnel Board. They're not going to be laying off personnel in your departments, the mayor's, the mayor's office, the city council offices. I mean, there's a percentage increase in there for your offices as well. Where, is that going away? You know, that's a question. So anyway, I would just ask that you ponder that point. Also, I think it brings up a bigger question, and that is, what is the long-term urban strategic plan for the city? Does this fit in? Does this action, will it fit in with that strategic plan? And I think we all know that for the past, I've got another, I've got another, we've, for the past two decades, the population has been declining. So I think all of that needs to be taken into consideration. Is this, is this the move? Is this where you want, is this the message that you want to send? And last but not least, if you decide to move forward with this, then I'd ask that this arbitrary timeline, this two-year timeline, which sounds like a long time, but it's not. When you're trying to talk about starting fire districts, areas may decide they want to incorporate, you know, we're trying to man, add manpower to Sheriff's Department, we're looking at fire stations. This doesn't happen quickly, and anything that would be done would have to be phased over a much longer period. Work with us on that, with the Sheriff's Department, and let's, and be more collaborative, I would ask you, if this is the direction you decide to go. But anyway, Happy New Year, everybody.
I just have a question, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hudson, for coming down and addressing this and welcome all of your input. The methodology, do you have a resource on that particular entity of your comments? Because I would like to get access to that, if I may.
We do, and in fact, our Mobile County Finance Director Dana Foster Allen is here today. She has been a source. We do have some information we can send to your office. Most of it is from the Department of Public Examiners. It's not what we came up with. It's what, a lot of information is from the city that was sent to them, and so that's...
And this is a resource that other cities or townships do when it comes to PJ to figure out their cost for the service?
That is my understanding, yes. Just the methodology alone. The numbers are from the Department of Public Examiners, but the methodology, based on what the sheriff tells us and what Ms. Foster Allen and taking with different jurisdictions, this is what we've been told.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that information.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to know whether or not you have or did you plan to contact 311 regarding the calls, the number of calls for service in the place?
The communications district? We have that information. That's how we have been able to...
You already have that?
We have it, yes. We got it yesterday afternoon after I sent the letter to you. So the percentage actually shows that the cost of services is, if calculated out, is about 70% less than the number that was presented by the city.
Okay, but I would share that with my office.
Absolutely. It came from the Sheriff's Department through the communications district.
Yes, okay.
We'll do. Any other?
If you could share all of that information that you recently received, if you shared it with all of us.
Absolutely.
It'd be most helpful.
Certainly.
And as you spoke earlier, this issue will be assigned to an ad hoc committee on the police jurisdiction, and Councilwoman Best Rich will be chair of that committee along with Councilman Fred Richardson, and then there's our sponsor, Councilman Joel Dave. And I hope that they will, I know they'll do, they have due diligence in making certain that this important issue is properly discussed publicly.
Certainly.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And Happy New Year to you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Dale Sawyer. My address is 2021 Bradbury Drive West, Mobile, Alabama. Soon to be Mobile, Alabama, we hope. Ladies and gentlemen, I didn't prepare to come here and speak this morning, although I thought I would just show up, then I decided to speak because of what's at hand. Being the chair of the West Mobile Annexation Committee, now it's not only losing fire protection that's on the table for us, we're now faced with losing police protection from a very fine police department, as we all know. This definitely raises the bar higher for us to have, we're just asking for the opportunity to vote. We want the opportunity to vote. We're now getting calls from all over the PJ seeking annexation and answers. How do we get to where you are? How do we get to a vote? And there's a lot of pressure coming down on every, and I'm getting these calls forwarded to me from other politicians in the area. This is, this is a big thing to people. Their personal protection for their families that the police department provides is very important to us. I've had conversations with Sam Cochran, and he's let it, he's talked to me personally about, Sheriff's Department is not set up to patrol urban areas. They are a rural police force. So that presents another problem. So it's not as though as we just get the Sheriff's Department to come, is going to come police our areas. There's a lot of, there's a lot of real estate, there's a lot of building, there's a lot of crime that goes on and have the potential for crime if we lose Mobile Police Department in this effort. We look for an annexation of the, as we, I say presented, this came about very fast. I've not had a chance to talk to Ms. Best Rich or the mayor about easing the numbers that have the people of the 13,000, because now it looks like that, per Ms. Hudson, there may be additional revenues to allow more people into the City of Mobile. We want to grow this city and be part of something this, the city's not grown in many, many years, except for the, except for the commercial corridors for revenue, revenue corridors. And, you know, it's time to grow. Yesterday, I was listening to Mr. Dave's talk on Sean Sullivan's show, and he alluded that, well, this has been going on since 1947. The average person out here, you would just think, well, yeah, this area in West Mobile has been here since 1947, getting all these services for free, but let's back up a little bit. In about, in the 50s, I think the city limits went to about University Boulevard. My grandparents built the house on East Road outside the city limits. It took the power, probably three months to get the power out there. The area grew. The City of Mobile expanded. They annexed. The area grew once again. They annexed. The area grew to where it is at Cody, the line is at Cody Road. But Mobile, since the growth passed that, has not annexed past that except for the commercial corridors to take the revenue, left the people out. There's nowhere for the City of Mobile to expand its houses, places for people to live. Mr. Manzi, if I may address, you had alluded that there's plenty of places in your neighborhood to build. Well, why are people building in your neighborhood? People are leaving. Kids are growing up. They're leaving those neighborhoods. They're going to West Mobile. They're going where they can find modern services and modern amenities. That's what people seek as they grow, as they prosper, they want better. So I asked the city council to consider our annexation, and thank you very much for the great support that we've gotten from the city council, but we just want the opportunity to vote. And after we, not only do I find a responsibility to our committee, but there's going to be a lot of people out there left without, that we're going to have to help find solutions to also. So, so we got fire on the table, losing fire, now losing police. EMS was lost over a year ago. We need your help. We bring a total solution, a positive solution to all, a positive solution to this city and positive revenue. Thank you very much.
Any questions of Mr. Sawyer?
Thank you.
Appreciate you, appreciate you coming down, Mr. Sawyer. Good to see you again.
It's always strange to be on this side of the table, I'll tell you. My name's Jerry Carl, Mobile County Commissioner, District 3. My home address is 12451 Airport Boulevard. So thank y'all. Thank you for the job you do. Anyone that's willing to run for an office and serve in a public capacity has my respect, and as most of y'all, I know you on a personal basis, so I respect what you do. I also respect your space. I try to stay out. I've been very quiet on this annexation intentionally. I've met several of you privately, one-on-one, but I always feel like when another elected official kind of gets publicly and steps in your space, it's a little uncomfortable for all of us. But I'm driven here by a phone call yesterday I got. I was not going to speak until yesterday. I had an 83-year-old man call me from the area that we're talking about out in West Mobile. He told me he was worried about his wife and fire protection, and as humor, I asked him, why are you not worried about yourself? He said, I've got cancer and I'm about to die, but I'm worried about my wife. This is, this is an 83-year-old man that's at the end of his rope, and he's worried about fire protection. And that's where I drew the line, decided I wanted to get involved in this. County government is set up so much different than city government. County government is set up road and bridges. We used to be called road and bridge commissioners, because our focus is road and bridges. Our focus is to build a structure where the cities can grow, where the cities can tie in. That's where Hillcrest come from, that's where Cody come from, that's where Schillinger's come from. But we have to use a very long, broad view. Now, I'll give you an example. Schillinger's Road, the wide end of Schillinger's Road, it, that project started in 1977, and hopefully we'll finish it next year. We have to look that far ahead, so we, you have short vision in serving a public office, and that's what I'm here to talk about. As county government, we have set these things up, and what county government is not set up for is some of the things that we're about, that we're here to talk about, which is fire protection and police protection in a suburban area. I kid Sheriff Cochran, I tell him those ugly brown cars are brown because they stay on so many dirt roads, and there's a lot of truth to that. There's a lot of truth to that. We're constantly running up and down dirt roads. But county government was never set up to do any type of fire protection. Zero. Zero. So when we found this big, open, empty district where we had no fire protection whatsoever, no district set up, that's when we brought it to the attention of the community, and we tried to get them involved. To get 30,000 people to agree on something is a challenge. To get seven to agree on something is a challenge. So I have been through efforts of a lot of Dale Sawyers and some of these other groups. We have been trying to get people to come together and make the decision, excuse me, on annexation, on a fire district, and are starting their own cities. And just for the record, they're going to start their own city if something doesn't change, and change pretty quick. That is on the books. They are working towards it. They will do it. Will they call West Mobile? I have no idea, but it will cut off the growth of Mobile, and that's the part that worries me the most. We cannot allow this to happen. Those folks out there, they're 30,000 strong. They shop in Mobile. They spend their money in Mobile. Most of them work in Mobile. As an elected official, just for the record, most of them have family that live in Mobile that vote, and they do talk. We've got to take a little different attitude towards these folks in West Mobile. The annexation vote campaign, I know all the political reasons why the votes went down the way it is, and I disagree with the majority of them. I feel like as a society, we've come much further than we, the politicians, want people to be here. I think we've got to come together. We've got to be one. You talk about one Mobile, we've got to be one Mobile County. We've got to become one nation. We've got to quit this getting split up based on your race or your politics or, you know, let's become what we are, we're Americans, and let's be proud of that. Let's be proud of Mobile. Let's find one way to positively move it in a positive way. We're different. God made us all different. All of us are made different. Our religions are different, our race is different, our sex is different, but God planned it that way because my weakness is your strength. Your strength is my weakness, and that's the way it works. It's just like a marriage, just like a marriage. So the fire protection is my biggest fear, and if you're going to pull out and you're going to put a two-year limit on it with this ordinance, ordinance 02, 045, unless something's changed, that is going to cripple all the efforts that I've got going right now. We have tried and tried and tried to get these people. I ask you, please to drop that. I ask you three quick things. I ask you to quit playing politics with West Mobile folks. That's 30,000 people. Those are people that I represent, those are people that pay taxes. They pay taxes in Mobile. If you take that 30,000 out of your cash flow, it would hurt. Don't believe for a second if they start a new city, they're going to have their own shopping center, their own gas station, their own convenience stores, and that money will be spent in West Mobile. You're still going to have 180,000 population here, but your cash flow is going to be cut dramatically. Second thing, take this ordinance completely. Second thing, take this ordinance completely off the table. Let's do away with it. Give us, give us a chance to work. We're moving out there. It's very slow, granted, very slow, but we are moving and we will pull it together. And third, let's use this as a potential to be One Mobile. We can be One Mobile. Mobile is a county and it's a city, you know, but we can come together and work together as professional elected officials. There's no one here that I don't appreciate, and I need your help on this one. So let's stop it and let's move forwards as One Mobile together. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question, it's kind of, if you don't mind.
Sure.
There are other areas within the county that you do provide the fire and police service for.
No, sir.
Where they have fire volunteer.
Correct.
Fire districts.
They do.
Set up and stations.
Right.
But the police service is essentially provided by the sheriff.
Yes, but we don't have any heavy suburban areas like we're talking about here.
And that kind of leaves us to hypothetical, purely hypothetical. I'm going to take Wilma, that Wilma area, that isn't attached, adjacent to the city of Mobile by any means. Say there were, it's still unincorporated, and there was just exponential growth in that area. Two or three, two or three new big plants, a lot of residential development. How would that be, how would you respond to that?
Sims would take it. Sims is growing. Sims is, Sims knows what they're doing. Sims is growing. They're going to take all the real estate they can possibly get. Sims will be the new Mobile, if you're not careful. And there's nothing wrong with Sims. I think Sims has got some great management, they've got great vision, and they're growing, they're constantly taking roads from us, which we build them with the intention of they will be turned over to the cities. But Wilma, I guarantee you would be taken in by Sims. And Mobile has got to use the same long-term vision. You've got to, you know, because we're only here a certain amount of time. Some of us may be, this may be our last term, which it is for me, and it may be some of y'all's last terms too, due to whatever, health or voting patterns or whatever changes. But we've got to look past that. We've got, what are you going to do for the city council person that's replacing you 25 years now? What you do today will affect him in 25 years, or her in 25 years. So we've got to look past our differences, we've got to look past the politics we've got to do. There's nothing I do in the county that I don't think of how it's going to affect the city, whether it's the township of Dolphin Island, whether it's Ballabatri, or whether it's the city of Mobile. I constantly keep those three, because those are the three that I'm directly responsible for. I keep them on my mind. But the growth of the city is going to require real estate. There's one piece left in Mobile that's developable. They're going to build a new house. They don't want to build it in the middle of houses that were built in the 60s. Let's just be honest. They want a new house, they want a new lot, everything wants to be new. We're looking at West Mobile, at one subdivision, that's going to be close to 500 houses that we're real close to pulling off. Sims would love it. Mobile's going to miss it, because Mobile don't want to talk about annexation. We're looking at development out there as far as commercial stuff. You're going to pay for it downtown, Dillard's, the others, because the business, the businesses follow that growth pattern. They're going to go to where those young families are, because they're the ones spending money. Old people like me, we've already bought everything we want to buy, and we've got our cars and our house paid for, and so on and so forth. Did you agree with that part? But anyway, you know, the businesses are going to follow that, and that pattern is that long-term vision that they're using. They're not moving to West Mobile because it's, it's, you know, they know that's where the money's moving. They understand that, and that's what they're following. I'm sorry. Rattle too much.
That pretty well answers. Let's just take it from Wilma, and let's go, Sims, do you all currently provide any first responder services for them?
Sims contracts with the sheriff's department. That's what, Sims has their own fire department.
Okay.
Again, the fire is always an issue. The area that we're talking about has no district set up. To have a district, they have to get a certain percentage of votes, of signatures. It has to be put on a ballot and voted for. It had, a per-house fee has to be charged. There's a lot of things that's got to happen over a year, a year and a half period before you even build the first fire station, before you buy the first fire truck. That's not the problem. Young people don't volunteer like they have in the past. Volunteer fire departments are stacked by volunteer people. And I'm told 70% of the fire coverage in America is by volunteer. Great organization, Seven Hill, Second to None, that protect my house. But they're primarily older people like myself. You're talking about a, you're talking about a new community, and these numbers we keep throwing around of West Mobile. Kind of Chil Road was a dirt road when my wife was, lived on it.
Yes, yes. Well, I certainly appreciate your answers, Commissioner, and I thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
I have some questions.
Sure.
Not necessarily a question, but, because I think you've really helped to articulate the aspect of a planning jurisdiction, which for years, the planning commission that was stemmed from the city of Mobile oversaw a lot of those suburban-type neighborhoods, and they look a lot like the ones that are on the borders already in place. But they're new, newer, like you said, that people search for, but they have the curb, the gutter, the sidewalk, and the city pulled back the planning jurisdiction for planning. But when you, when you look at developing, you look at what infrastructure's in place, and we had the police planning jurisdiction. So we knew that those people that were being planned for in the growth were being covered, hence the hole that exists today if we completely pull the plug on it. But the whole idea to have a planning jurisdiction, not just for police and public safety issues, but for planning and development, is to grow. And we've done that well for many, many years, and that's why.
Everything in this area actually went through your planning commission.
Yes.
Although it's just recently been turned over to us.
Yes, yes.
So everything's within your specs.
Exactly.
So it.
And it was a good thing, it is a good thing.
And for those of y'all that have not come out there and rode around, please, I encourage you. I would love to take you out there. We'll ride around.
It looks a lot like that's already in the city limits. Exactly.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. President. I don't have any questions.
Okay. You threw a minute.
Yes. I have comments. I have comments.
Go ahead, Fred.
But I don't have, but you can be seated, because I'm not going to ask you.
Do you have a question or comment?
Well, I was just going to thank you for coming, and I appreciate what you said, and I really think you hit the nail on the head when you start talking about how these other cities or city will choke us off.
Yeah.
If we don't do something, that's something we talked about during annexation, and I know Sims out in my area is very aggressive. All they've got to do is swing right around that airport and grab every one of those West Mobile neighborhoods.
And they have a right to.
And it will be absolutely choked.
I encourage them to do as much as they can do, and it's just a good, solid group of people. But I wish each one of you a very blessed and happy new year.
Same to you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, there is, I'll challenge you to go to any major city in this country and drive 15 miles and see whether you still be in that same city. Go to Atlanta, Georgia. Start at any point you want to start and drive 15 miles, you will not be in the city of Atlanta, Georgia. You'll be in some other municipality. Chicago is surrounded by other cities, except at the lake. Going in any direction, they got all the cities. Birmingham, it's the nature of cities. So you think Atlanta being choked and strangled to death because they got those other municipalities? No. We are just blessed that no one is organized up there, but that they're going to choke us off? No. Mobile doesn't have to be big to be great. We need to make what we have great, and nobody's going to choke us off. That's not no concern of mine, that we're going to be choked off because of somebody doing way out there. You can leave the Cochran Bridge that separates Mobile from Ballin County. You can drive 15 miles and you still be in the corporate city limits of the city of Mobile. You can't do it in Atlanta. I don't see nobody choking up there trying to cough. I'm saying, that's just a theory, a scare tactic, there's nothing to it. And Commissioner Carr said that we're all different. I want you to know it's 7.5 billion people in the world. I said, you?
I said, here we go.
Yes, you're right. It's 7.5. It's my time.
Go.
Just let the president know if you want to speak. I know y'all know where I'm going, but let me get there. 7.5 people in the world. And Commissioner Carr said we're not all of the same race. I want to set the record straight. All humans are homo sapiens. We're in the same species. All humans are in the same species, and someone has come out there with this fake stuff saying that since all our skin colors are not the same, we're not the same species. All dogs look alike. They're all in the same species, all have the same color. They're in the same species. All mules. The evidence is, if you can procreate with who you are, that species, no human can procreate outside of that species. I don't have to look like nobody but Fred Richardson, and you don't either. We have allowed us not looking to divide us, fooling us that you're in some race and I'm in the same race as every other human being. My ethnicity is African-American. My race, I'm homo sapien, I'm a member of the human race, just like every other human, and I wouldn't take lonely, no, nobody. I debate this issue on a stage with, I don't care if you have nine PhDs. I dare you to go up on a stage and sing for me. Just want to set the record straight. I'm in the same race you're in, Jared.
We'll get that straight.
He just said we were different.
Supposed to be.
Right.
Mr. Manzi. I'm Stephen Dean, I'm retired fire chief of the city of Mobile. I live at 3655 Potomac Ridge, Coates, Mobile, Alabama. I came down to talk to you about the proposal on the police jurisdiction. I've lived here all my life. I remember when Mayor Langdon and the state legislature moved the city limits from the loop to Cody Road by a state act. Because I was riding in a 54 Studebaker, figuring my system law up when the bus stopped at the loop at Johnny's Drive-In. So I remember those days. So that jurisdiction pushed out then. Took a long time to build that property out. Remember when Airport Boulevard was a dirt road in there? So the city's grown a whole lot. The area in that jurisdiction is somewhere between 65 and probably 85,000 people, if you look at all of it. That's how many live out there. A lot of them are older people. Like Mr. Carl said, they're scared. Some of them are scared, because they don't know if they're safe or not. They know they're safe when jump folks are showing up. They know they're safe when those big red fire trucks show up and they have three or four people on them. They know they're not safe when they show up with a fire truck and they have one or two on it. There's a difference. Volunteer, there is down in this country, in the fire service. There it is, it's protected by over 80% of the population, or the square miles of this country is protected by volunteers. But over 80% of the population is protected by 20% of the firefighters in this city or in the country. And if you look it up, and if you look at the volunteer here across this country, it's down. Over 600,000 in the fire service this year. Down. So they're trying to fill those billets if they can, and they're, people are busy. They just are. But everyone here understands that. Just do the right thing, get the information, find out one, what the proper process is to roll the jurisdiction back, if there is one, for a Class II city in the state of Alabama. The legislative office can let you know that in Montgomery. And then see what that process is, and if you want to go there, or if you want to grow the city. I mean, you know, when I was here, Mayor Dow wanted to look at the jurisdiction. We were told we couldn't roll it back. We looked at it when Mayor Jones was here. We were told we couldn't roll it back. I thought, well, there are, taking it to the state line. Go ahead and just shove the limits to the state line, and then you're blocked off, you're not going to go Mississippi anyway. Provide the protection, bring the people, you have the land to develop, you can bring businesses in, you can build neighborhoods, and you can grow. So to me, just do the honorable thing, do the right thing, and put it before the people. I'd vote for it. I'd help Dan ask, somebody just ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you again for coming down today. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in this particular public hearing? If not.
Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President.
I'd like to make a comment, but I'd like to ask a question. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Hussin, excuse, Connaught Hoss, I want to say Connie, but Hussin, and also Commissioner Jared Carr for coming down. Both of them brought out two very important themes. Commissioner Carr, could you tell me the tax that's in Sims?
Sims is actually a Connie's, she can speak more freely on the tax base, she would know about it. The tax base is in Sims.
The state of Alabama is.
If you could come on to the microphone, please.
I'm trying to avoid it. She would just, no more than I would.
We will check on that to be absolutely certain. The state of Alabama, you know, charges it's four cents, and I think six cents has a penny, unless they have gone up on that, and I'm not sure whether they have.
Six cents.
Pardon me?
We're having to add four.
Okay, we'll check on that. You know, I don't, I don't think it's that high, unless they've gone up.
For the county.
Right, it's four for the, four for the state, one for the county, and I think one for the city. So I think it may be six, six cents on the dollar.
All right, thank you so much.
But we'll reconfirm.
Can we also get their ad valorem tax rate too? What, you know, how many meals they're paying to their city as well?
City, city out of.
Yeah. Yeah. Get it to you.
Appreciate that information.
And again, I do appreciate you all coming down. Both of you are express value. Couple things I would have, I would like to say, even Chief, you know, Chief had pointed out, you know, we need to just take our time. I had expressed to the mayor a couple times, Mayor Stimson, that I was not really against Mobile growing. Mobile got to grow. I know that for a fact. But the thing about it is that with so much issue that Mobile currently have, and one of the issues that we do have is 10% sales tax. 1% sales tax that we currently have goes towards many of our CIP projects throughout the city of Mobile. You know, if we don't get it from the county commissioner, you know, we had to get it from our CIP. Our sales tax was 9%, and so now we have our sales tax at 10% to cover our CIP. Whereas the city of Sims say, the people in that area, incorporated area, say, well, do I want to join Mobile for 10%? Or do I want to join Sims for 8%? Or 7%? Or whatever it is. You know, they're going to go with the percentage. We need a roadmap as far as in our plan, you know, not just go up and just really just annex, you know, city of Mobile, or either just really just cut off the PJ all the way backwards. Again, we need to really need to grow, but we need to also take care of what we have currently. You know, even, you're talking about pulling back the PJ, we need to pull back our sales tax. You know, how many people want to pay 10%? Most people want to pay 9% or either 8%. And that is something that we need to do, is really just take care of what we have within our city. And once we take care of what we have within our city and get to that certain point, make. And once we take care of what we have within our city, and get to that certain point, maybe we can go ahead and draw back from 10% sales tax back down to 9%. And then also go ahead and annex those in unincorporated areas. Again, I'm not against growing the city of Mobile, but I am against growing the city of Mobile where we already have issues that is dilapidated, like some issues in areas that's in my district. And again, I agree with Chief, that we do need to do a roadmap and to see where is our future going, and bring people to the table, not just have A, B at the table, but bring A, B, C, D, which includes citizens inside of the city limits of Mobile, and also citizens that's outside of the city limits of Mobile. That's the one thing that we need to learn to do, is communication, bring everybody to the table and be transparent. Now, one thing that also disturbed me on this morning is all these different numbers that's going around. We get numbers that it costs this millions of dollars for the unincorporated areas, and then we get numbers from the county commissioners saying it only costs this millions of dollars. We going too fast. We need to slow down. Bring things to the table currently and just see what's the actual facts. Not saying that the county is correct and the city is wrong, or the city is correct. I don't know, I'm not a professional. You know, one reason that I advocate to have a public relation person, because she can go out and do some research. And that's one employee that we really do have, is our city clerk, and our city clerk don't have time to go out and do research. But it's just for all of us, just to get to the table and see exactly what is our future, what is our future roadmap is going to be. You know, not only just to annex Mobile or bring back the PJ, but what about the sales tax? You know, what about the citizen with the potholes and the parts dilapidated? That's what we need to do, is really sit down and find a roadmap that we can follow. Thank you all for coming.
We checked on it, Sims has gone to 3.5%, so that's a total of 8.5 now.
Ma'am, sit up.
Presentation.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to this council, Joseph Seymour Jones.
Mr. President. Connie.
Commissioner.
I've been, uh, I'm sorry to break in, but I was holding my comments on the proposed ordinance until we actually get to the proposed ordinance, but I don't want Commissioners Hudson and Carl to think that I was holding it until they left the room. So it's...
That's what they think.
Please stay if you'd like, I'm not, I just, I've been holding my comments until we actually got to that item.
Well, did you, they've come back now.
Would you like me to go ahead and...
They've come back, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. I have, I just decided on the agenda because I was concerned with the amount of money that the citizens, the taxpayers of the city of Mobile are spending on providing police and fire protection to county residents. We've had some discussion this morning about the fact that, you know, the city, my understanding, the city started providing these services in 1947. The, the city has expanded the boundaries at that time in the police jurisdiction, which three miles is expanded along with that. But, but when this started, there weren't that many people in the police jurisdiction. And, and the provision of these services was not unduly burdensome in terms of the budget of the city. And now, as we've heard today, and as we know, there are somewhere between 16, 80,000 people out there, and, and the provision of the services is, is expensive. The numbers that we have been providing to the state of Alabama, which the state has not disputed, indicate that's $26 million a year to provide those services. Excuse me, and all of the revenues, the tax revenue received from that area are 12 million, which leaves a deficit of expenditures, expenditures over revenues of $14 million a year. Now, there's been, the methodology by which those expenditures are calculated have been, has been independently verified. I think the method, there's been some question as to the methodology. I think questioning the methodology is, is an important and, and appropriate thing. And, and I would hope that as we move forward on this, that representatives of the city and the county can get together and look at how their, how their methodology they're adopting, and how that methodology is being applied to the facts, so we can narrow the gap between what I think the unreimbursed expenses are. We'll see how that goes. I, as I said, I've been using the, the numbers that we provide to the state every year. The ordinance I proposed would provide for a two-year window. It would not take effect. It provides a deadline of January 1st, 2022, which I thought at the time I was drafting the ordinance would provide sufficient time for those affected, the county and the, and the residents themselves, to budget for hire, train, replacement first responders. That date may be too short. And I'm perfectly willing to, insofar, I can only speak for myself, but I'm perfectly willing, insofar as I'm concerned, to look at a later date in order to, because I don't, I don't have any interest in, in leaving these folks in the lurch. I think we're all, we're all agreed on that. There, there needs, we all agreed, we don't want to leave them in lurch. The other part is, I don't believe that without a deadline, any progress will be made. So if two years is too short, then what period of time would be appropriate? I'm perfectly willing to consider that. So I think, I think it'd be, again, going back to the methodology, I think it'd be great if the city and the county representatives got together and isolated where the, where the differences of agreement are. I fully support a full, complete, and public discussion of the merits of this proposal. As the county commissioners have pointed out, it's an important matter. It will affect the city of Mobile and the residents of county affected for some time to come. And it's appropriate to be fully vetted, and I look forward to that. Based again on my understanding of the numbers, I don't think that, that this arrangement can continue the way it is now. The, the, the number of residents in the police jurisdiction is probably going to grow. And so the provision of those, the expenses associated with the provision of those services will grow over time. So the, the issue needs to be addressed. Yesterday, when I was on the radio, I said there were three possible options as to how we go forward. The first is to annex these folks into the city of Mobile, which I think is absolutely the best option for everybody. It's the best option for the county, best option for the city, and most importantly, the best option for the residents of the police jurisdiction. That doesn't appear to be, uh, that doesn't appear it's going to happen, based on the vote we had a month or so ago. So that's the best option. The second best option is the one I've put forward, or some modification, but a phased withdrawal, a phased withdrawal of police and fire services from the police jurisdiction in such a way that those replacement services can be put there. The worst option, I think, as far, and I, you know, I'm sworn to represent the people of the city of Mobile, and it's their interest I'm concerned in. And the worst option, I think, for the people of the city of Mobile, based on the information I have available to me today, is to continue the way we're going now. Now, there's a fourth option out there, which is some kind of arrangement between the city and the county, where the, where the city gets reimbursed for the provision of these services. Again, I'm open, I'm open to alternative solutions, but what I'm not open to is, is, is continuing the current arrangement indefinitely. And so I hope that, I hope that, I think everybody in the room feels the same way, that we engage in a full, complete discussion, everybody open with an open mind, and let's arrive first, if we can, at what the, what the reimbursed expense to the city is, if there is one, and then how, and how will that gap, secondly? Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
We had a, we had a public hearing, and then we had speakers for the public hearing. And, and it was kind of unusual that we would allow Joe with his commentary. We would allow it because he asked for the two commissioners to come back. Now, the item is on the agenda, and so when we get to the item, if we could have any additional commentary at that time, it would be appreciated.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to beg to differ. I probably only didn't speak...
Mr. Williams, go ahead, you have the floor.
Yeah, just briefly, I'm, I'm, I appreciate you all coming down, and this is really for the commissioners. Ms. Hudson, you understand how, where we sit. And it, sometimes it, it is a matter of where you sit, as Mr. Crowe pointed out when he came to the podium. The thing that I'm most interested in is how are we going to do it together? Comment made that lost EMS. Didn't lose EMS, we never abandoned the people of the unincorporated area of Mobile County. We never abandoned them. We, we did say that we would like to make an orderly transition, and that orderly transition with regards to EMS took place. And still today, if EMS can't answer, Mobile's going to answer. And make no mistake about it, no matter where this ends up, if there is a need for MPD to supplement or go ahead of the county sheriff's department, we'll do that, and we'll even do it in the city of Sims. If there is a natural disaster of any kind, we may deploy all of our forces to include public works, regardless of the jurisdiction. So I, I just, I ask that everybody watch, you know, what we're going to do and when we're going to do it, and this is where it'll happen. Mr. Davis points out that there is a possibility of cost share. But none of the above will happen orderly if we table this now and just simply drop it and go back to discussing it as we have. This action, regardless of what the deadline is, is going to force us publicly to discuss, and I look forward to that discussion. Thank you. Thank you both.
Mr. Richardson.
Thank you.
And anyone else who would like to have additional comment?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. It was in 1907 that the state of Alabama created jurisdictions. And I think when it does sell, it's going to be something between 1920 and 1925, not '47, when both people first established its jurisdiction. That's been worked on, we'll note before the end of this week, the exact date that we had. Otherwise, it's going to be almost 100 years we've had a jurisdiction. And it has not posed no great threat and harm to the corporate limits of the city of Mobile. And we have been, in desperate times, 2008, the national economy collapsed, greatest recession since the Great Depression, we still police the jurisdiction. Now, if you look at the ordinance, the premise in the ordinance is that we're spending 2.2, more than $26 million a year in this jurisdiction. That we're collecting 2.2 million in business license fees. That's the premise in the ordinance. If the premise is false, the conclusion is false. The fact is, we collect more than 2.2. Even, even the sponsor just cited 12.2, and we still calculating. But in the ordinance, there's nothing about no 12.2 in the ordinance. It's not in there. It's that measly 2.2. And anybody out there reading this, where Mobile should, they should get rid of it. If we're not collecting but 2.2, and we had the annexation before us, same 2.2 was waived in front of us. And I told you all then, if your premise is false, your conclude, you can't bring me no fake numbers and have me, and get me trailing behind you with, with no fake numbers. We need to know what the real numbers are. What the real cost is. We need no made up numbers. If you can't justify what you put before us, it's fake, if it can't be justified. I have made a request for the information, I expect to get the information I've requested. When we get all of the information, smoke settled, we look at it, we'll see where we are right now, based on what's before us is false, based on what's before us right now.
Mr. Davis? I consider that a personal attack on my integrity, so I'm going to have to respond to it. The ordinance, the proposed ordinance clearly says that the city's spending $26 million, which is supported by reports that the city has filed for years with the state of Alabama. The ordinance also says that we collect a little lower $2 million out there in business license tax, which is also what our reports to the state of Alabama provide. The number I used with respect to the $12 million is all revenues, business license taxes, plus us sales taxes and other revenues, which is also in the reports we provide to the state of Alabama. The state of Alabama, to my knowledge, has never disputed those numbers. Nor has anyone else, except Mr. Richardson, ever disputed those numbers. So to claim that they're false numbers, or that I manufactured the numbers, is completely false.
It's, while the commissioners are here...
Ms. Rich?
I was going to reserve to when we actually vote on this item, but thank you, appreciate it. I'm going to try to pull together a committee meeting for January 14th, since I've been charged as being chair of this rollback committee, but I had a check with the members, but tentatively would like to do that. At that time, if I could ask the administration to please provide their breakdown of costs, the methodology, any information that this committee could digest, to have that in a format where either it's, I get best written out and spelled out and broken down, I'm not, not asked for now, but if that gives enough time for the administration...
Yes, ma'am. May I, may I respond to the request for information?
Sure.
During annexation, Mr. Manzi correctly asked for the last three years of Department of Public Examiner reports, which I provided to the entire council. There's a breakdown in that report. It also discusses the methodology for computing cost, which is tied to deregulations of calls of service to the location the call. I have recently got a request from Mr. Richardson for five years, well, we only have four.
Okay.
So you have 16, 17, and 18. I will provide 15. The law that required us to assemble those figures was passed during 2014 or 2015. So those four years exist.
Okay.
2019 is not yet complete. What we typically do is wait for the auditors not to file their file report that we use to gain our department other numbers. But we do wait for their adjustments, and, you know, those are coming every week now. So 2019 won't be ready...
Be ready by the 14th.
By the 14th, but...
Sure.
What I'll do is resend you 16, 17, and 18. I'll add 15 to it. The other thing Mr. Richardson asked for was a breakdown of the calls for service that I just described to you. And we can provide that for, actually for all five years. I, I have already assembled that. I have already assembled that for 2019. So I can get you those five years.
That would be great, and since the commissioners are here, if they could instruct their staff to please provide the same yearly information that you, or any information that you can provide to this committee for what you believe is the cost and what revenue is also coming to the table, and I didn't ask this of the administration, but I would like the same, what revenue is coming in, the business tax and the sales tax that we achieve from the same area that we are responding to.
That is in the report.
Okay. That would be terrific. And your presence at those meetings, because I know how busy your calendars are, but would welcome all commissioners, and I will send, you know, an invitation for the committee to join us and be present to answer questions or provide information. Same with whoever the mayor feels needs to be at this committee to provide information like that, to be on their calendars for the 14th. And we'll plan for a 2:00. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Gray.
Thank you. Didn't necessarily intend to say anything since I've already, you know, had an opportunity, but I do wanna thank Connie and Jerry and all your staff for coming and being here with us today, and we do look forward to the committee meeting, looking at all the information, asking plenty of questions, and trying to come to some sort of a way that is going to be in the best interest, of course, of the city and the county and everybody. Dale and your groups especially, we want to work toward the best interests of everybody and see if we can't figure out what that is. With the questions that Beth was asking of the administration, Paul, if we could include, when you're looking at the service calls, I don't know if on those calls it includes the duration, like from the time the call goes out to how long it takes to get there, work the call, and get back into, like, city proper, that sort of thing. And then the other part of that, and we probably have gone through this before, but when any of the officers are called into the jurisdiction, then what does that mean for any calls that might happen, say, at my house, if the officers that normally patrol my neighborhood are in the jurisdiction? How does that domino effect happen? I just would like to get some specific examples, if we can. I mean, I think we need to see the proof, you know, of what we're talking about. You know, let's look at what the problem is and how we figure out what to do about it, and if we're spending an inordinate amount of time in the jurisdiction, I'd like to see some good examples of that, and especially know the time that it takes out there.
On the response to the jurisdiction, that's a call for service, correct? It's not proactive? Am I correct about that?
The way the calls are, have been presented up to this point, have been duration of the first apparatus, the first vehicle, to arrive on the scene. As you can imagine, that takes longer to reach that destination in police jurisdiction. For, I think, 1/2015, we used the number of calls that, you know, it's not a bad methodology, but it's.
But that's the only way they get a response, is through a call.
Correct.
It's not proactive. They don't patrol in neighborhoods. They have to be called for service, correct?
They do patrol. I'll let Chief Barber get into that.
Okay, I'd be curious.
They do patrol the jurisdiction. We have 40 officers that are assigned to patrol the jurisdiction, so we're not just responding to the jurisdiction, we are out there. So about 20% is what we'll show you that our calls for service are going to be in the jurisdiction area. When I first came on, as much as Chief would, we were told only to respond to jurisdiction.
That's what I thought.
But the area has grown so much that we actually had to staff the area because we didn't just respond, we never came back once they went out there. And so there's 10 beats that are created in the jurisdiction area with 40 police officers assigned to the beats, and that's not counting the additional personnel needed for supervision, as well as the detectives for support and the communications personnel for dispatch.
I didn't think it was that thick, because that's less than that's in the district that I present, as far as beats.
Again, the area we're talking about, if it were incorporated, would be the eighth largest city in Alabama. It is very densely populated.
Yes.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
Chief, Director Barber, is there any requirement in the state law that we furnish, that we add beats to the jurisdiction and we assign 20 officers out there to remain out there for the duration of that date? Is it anything in state law that says that's the kind of policing we ought to furnish the jurisdiction? Is this a person's decision, decision the city made? Is it a requirement by law that we do that?
There is no state law requiring the police response.
That's what I.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Directly to police, but the business license fees, these are 2 million, whatever they may be, that's annually collected. State law does require that the city of Mobile, having collected those fees, provide an equal amount of service to the jurisdiction.
I agree 100%. Yes. And the last thing is, according to the ordinance that is before us, paragraph F says, that's on the findings, according to the report filed by the city executive director of finance, with the Alabama State Department of Public Examiners, the city extended approximately $26.6 million in the police jurisdiction for fiscal year 2018. This is what the ordinance says. And then paragraph G says, in contrast, the city collected approximately $2.1 million in business license fee. There's no other record of the city collecting any other funds in this ordinance, and that's what I was alluding to. If the 12-point, 12, the 12-point million, it only states 2.136 million dollars. That's what I said. No other funding that we collected is mentioned in this ordinance, and what's before us is what's in ordinance.
I guess the question I have is to both commissioners, because I believe the answer to this is gonna be found through dialogue, through discussion, through hopefully sitting down and looking at the disparities and the deficiencies from a comprehensive and holistic perspective, and then come charting a course forward. And I'm hopeful, and I'm gonna ask you all publicly, since we've had this very public discussion, are the two of you all willing to engage in that kind of discussion?
Yes, of course, certainly.
Then I'm happy to hear that. I'm happy to hear we've got a committee. Pardon me?
We can't meet together.
Right.
We would have to be separate, so you'd have two different meetings, but I would love a chance to also tell you about the developments and some of the things that are coming out there. Talking about $14 million deficit. I could share some things that's probably gonna make us close to $14 million in the next two years.
Commissioner Carl, if we call a public meeting, can't you come and discuss things? We're not gonna be voting on anything, so couldn't you come at the same time? It's a city initiative, it's not a county initiative.
Yeah.
At that point, and we will have our finance director and.
Right. I'll make sure an invitation goes to all offices.
I think it's important to come together and to figure out what is really correct here, and then the next step is where are we gonna go from there?
Yeah, I understand that if it's a county initiative or something you're gonna vote on, but, and we're talking about your people that you represent at the table.
We're talking about leaning together, so.
I understand that. I hope so, because it'll be well advertised.
Thank you all. I believe we're back to you, Madam City Clerk.
Okay, we're on presentation of petitions and other communications to council. Joseph Seymour Jones.
Good morning.
Good day.
Appreciate the opportunity to address this body as we see the effort to work forward in moving the county and the city. I'm in a restricted area, the city, excuse me. I'm here today as Joseph Seymour Jones, 1464 St. Stevens, where my mother was unfortunate enough to buy us a home, as she thought, with two separate addresses. The Dirk address was the one that ruled. That address is 1500. So in any case, 1500 really has about what I think would be three single properties, but that's debated. So in any case, I am bringing, since today is the last day for tax statements, and when I did come in the past, I addressed the fact that the home did not get a tax statement proper. I would have been in charge of two. So I gave you that record. I'm gonna also give you the one for today, which is my sworn statement, it has to do with the fact that the probate record did, in fact, record on November 2nd, a page number 91 in the description of my parents' property. And that 291 cannot be singly certified by probate office, but included with the conditions under which it was used, I would say it's appropriate to include it with my sworn statement, which I did. So as far as I can determine, there was no evidence of contact, contract, conduct that could be attributed to the commission for that era that remained until just recently. And on November 2nd of 77, after my mom made the July 77 purchase, that, lately, I've received a citation that indicates at least three to five of my cars are parked on what is now considered city property, and we're going to work with that as I process those cars, because they do have, as you sought to answer a public request previously, about permits to the home, and we didn't have many. We looked at it as whether or not we could really improve that place without these matters coming up, because we did not resolve the ownership of those lots by way of legal matters, lawsuits, habitat, humanity, City of Mobile, surveys that Wadier survey has just completed on your behalf to certify in this tax year, but the improvement of the project for this park, we're back to that issue.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you, what did you sign in to speak on?
I signed in to speak in on the December 12th, City of Mobile arrival at my address, our address, City of Mobile, the Lafayette Heights community. Everybody's got an interest in that park location. So I wanted to address the fact that I have 12 vehicles that are now on city property.
Are you gonna talk about your vehicles, or are you gonna talk about the park?
I'm gonna enter this into the record if I may. As far as the park goes, we're gonna let that ride because you've already approved that on December 17.
That's true.
It came onto the agenda on December 10, and I've been coming down since July 24th of 18. So I was very fortunate, between that first and 11th time to be in the audience, and it was placed on the agenda, as well as when it was voted on, but between the agenda item on the 10th and its approval on the 17th, I received citations which basically defined the property line at gunpoint. So we can get around that because that matters to be, with that from a criminal matter now. So in any case, moving forward, I have 12 Volvos. I'm soliciting.
Did you say at gunpoint?
Yeah. Your officers had to secure whether or not I owned the cars, so they came asking me to bring my driver's license, get my social security number. So I went on back in the house and got them all of the titles and let them open all of them up, so all of the vehicles are registered to me. I have certified mail to pick up related to that process of that scene that day. So I'm gonna process a combination of civil scene as well as a criminal scene and follow through my dates for the criminal matters and seek to get some resolution within my family on the civil matter, rather to, you know, keep having this. So it's done. And I look forward to the park.
It's gonna be a great park.
And what day will we be expecting it?
I really don't know. Hopefully, by the first of the year, we'll have a groundbreaking, and we want to make certain that you're there with the shovel in your hand, hopefully.
I'm not looking forward.
Well, you should.
Ms. Salford Jones was my mother.
Mr. President?
I think she should have had the right to know about the park. So on February 3rd, we all got an interest in the park. I appreciate that.
Ms. Jones, Ms. Jones, hold on.
I wish I had one.
See to me that whatever you're looking for, whatever relief you're trying to gain, you're not getting it here.
Respect it very much.
Won't you hear me?
Yes, sir.
We've heard about these cars, we've heard about the police coming, and there's nothing we can do about it. I mean, but you keep telling us the same thing. You keep telling us that the police came, you had cars parked out there, you own them all, we all know, and you come back the next week and say, "Police came, we got cars parked." And our point is, there's nothing we can do.
It's most respected, and I'm letting you.
Maybe, so what you can do, this is what you can do, you can go to the police headquarters and file a complaint.
No complaint.
But you're complaining to us. You're really complaining to us when we can't do nothing about it. But something can be done about it if you feel like whatever happened was inappropriate. You can go file a complaint, but you can't file no complaint with us. We're legislative.
That's right.
The administrators are all at this table here. So I'm saying, if you come back with these Volvos, that's gonna be an issue because we already know, you've told us there's nothing, but there's nothing we can do.
Can I say this?
We gotta get you another subject, brother.
I am. If I can say this, before any citations or anything was considered secured about the scene, the property line was what the police officer ran for first, and I did not know my mother did not own it until he wrote the ticket that the cars on the city.
But then we can't do nothing about your property line, and you're bringing that to us too.
I appreciate it.
There's nothing we can do about that.
Mr. Richardson, you're mighty fine, and you know all the details.
And you're fine, man.
And thank you for your time.
All right.
Mr. Jones, I have one more question for you. You say you have 12 Volvos.
Yes, sir.
Do they work? Are they operable?
Well, you know, we can go back and tell you how I got them.
No, no, no. I don't want to hear the history.
It was a bicycle ride, and I was afraid that I would have to go back to it, so I just kept everyone I had. I pulled cars, parked out the yard, and kept riding.
So you have 12 inoperable Volvos in your yard?
I drove them there, and that's where they stayed.
But do they work?
I have a combination that can work.
How many of the 12, if you had the key, put it in the ignition, would cut on? Of the 12? Did you drive one down here today? Of the 12, how many?
Officer Eres ran into one of them in 2003. I get, you gave him $8,000, and the car's still sitting there.
Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir.
I ask you a specific question, if you don't mind.
And then we have a car wreck from like, back two years ago, it couldn't, the tag was two years old for the other person, gave the person time to get insurance.
Are they in the backyard?
They're sitting right there on the line.
Of the, front yard or backyard?
Dial it up if I'm good, mister. You can look right now. Take a look.
Okay, let me go back to my question. Of the 12, how many will cut on? How many will work?
The bicycle is in the house. They don't work. They go back from 1993, when I bought the first one.
Well, he comes, I wanna know now. He's brought these Volvos up.
Well, the first time you cited Ms. Jones for them, the first time, she didn't even own one. So it's not an ongoing issue about the cars. I think it's more so the property. So we're gonna separate civil for the land issue, criminal for the car issue, and the things I can't read.
But the question I ask you all is, of the 12, how many work? Nine? Two?
Can I proposition someone, contact 251-433-0053. Leave a message, and we can arrange to move those 12 cars by January 16.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I'm sure you wrote it, but you hadn't filled it.
What was that?
Never mind, Mr. Jones. Thank you. Happy New Year to you. Thank you. Happy New Year to you.
Reggie Hill?
All right.
Mr. President, members of the council, in the absence of our mayor, to the administration centers and stakeholders of Mobile, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. I'm asked today to speak on three, what I feel are very important topics, a potential public safety commission for the City of Mobile, a public safety consulting contract with success for the future, and an incident that I happened to be a part of a past week. I'm gonna say something before I get into that. I wanna stand in concert with the public safety. I want to stand in concert with the public safety director in saying that we should commend those first responders a lot more. Um, I have family, I have members, schoolmates, close friends that each, uh, served on the force. And for the record, if we recall, when there was a public hearing for raises as police officers, I was the only citizen that wasn't employed by the City of Mobile or affiliated with the police department to speak on behalf of that increase. So I just want to make sure that that is noted. Um, I want to look at three elements of this conversation as we move forward. Um, I will use the idea of planting seeds, nurturing potential and moving forward. Uh, we understand that even the largest trees, and we value trees a lot here in the City of Mobile, began as just a seed. And so we are able to implement initiatives right now, being proactive. We'll be able to change the dynamic in the City of Mobile when we're looking at public safety. Now, the great Albert Einstein insists that if we continue doing the same things over and over and over and over and over and over again, expecting different results, that is the definition of insanity. And so we should be able to invest in programs and projects that actually work and have the data to prove that. Um, I want to offer an idea of that if you're creating a garden of hope rather than a garden of disparity, we will be able to see that which that we're looking for. This is not just something that's true in certain districts, as it may have been in the past. We're seeing this all across the City of Mobile now. And we've been investing millions upon millions of dollars annually into projects and programs that I believe have great intentions but have not yielded the results for the money that we're investing in that. And I hope that right now, as a formal request to the president, presidents, council, as well as the chairman of the public safety committee, y'all will allow us to come and present something to you all about a consulting contract to work with the organization that has results to actually move the city forward. We cannot discuss all of this in five minutes. And so to actually believe that that's possible, we're each wasting our time here to think that. So we're hoping this is a formal request so that we can have a meeting and actually dialogue with you all on how we can move forward. The administration has put together an idea that this will be the safest city by 2020. At least right now, we can plant the seed with one day remaining to do that, to actually ensure that in 2020, we can make that happen. I'm optimistic. I believe in the opportunity of the City of Mobile. I believe that it's actually possible, but it's not going to happen unless all people are at the table. I want to offer this idea to you, and I hope that we can use this same enthusiasm that we're using with the agenda items, 28 dash 042 annexation, all this, to actually look at a committee to do this, bring people to the table that could actually get it done, who are in the trenches daily, all the time, working to make this happen. And I want to offer this idea. All right? Now, some people might say, "Nowhere." I have to say, "Now here." We are now here for an opportunity to move forward. We have an opportunity to put behind us things that have happened in the past, all the animosity that we may have had between administration, council, various citizens, whatever the case may have been, misunderstandings, misconceptions, whatever you think that could have been something that would prevent us from moving forward, I think this is the time that we actually move into the new year and say, "Hey, let's actually look at making this thing better so that we can do what's necessary." So I, I, I want to offer this last sentiment, and this is more of a personal note to me because I understand what it is that to deal with public safety issues. I understand what have my life threatened. I understand what it means to be scrutinized because you're a vocal about things that have happened in the city. So I have no ways to move forward. Now, I could easily come down here and talk about that weekly, but instead, I'm always looking for us to work together. That's what I want us to do. I would be foolish as long as everyone, as well as everyone else in this auditorium to believe that only seven council members and a mayor can fix all of our problems. It is up to the people in the city to work collectively together to do that. And so I hope that you will consider that, Mr. President, as well, I hope that our public safety, uh, chairman, uh, will consider that, with the committee chairman, as well that the public safety director will actually come in and get engaged, and we sit down and actually dialogue on how we can make this better, and we move the city, move the city forward. I'm confident that, um, you all will take a high consideration of what I presented to you, and I look forward to us moving forward and making this city the best city in the country, and I, I look forward for any, um, communications, and happy new year to everyone here. Thank you, Mr. President.
I, I want to say in response to Mr. Hill's request, I think his, his request has merit, but his request also comes with a, uh, the expectation of city resources, a contract. And contracting starts with the administration. We do have our public safety director here. Uh, the mayor is not in attendance, uh, but his, uh, chief of staff is here, Mr. Paul West, and I'm hopeful that you will, you all will relay the request of Mr. Hill to meet, to discuss, uh, the merits of his proposal, uh, and that hopefully from administratively, uh, you all be in a posture to convene that meeting. We, we could meet, and that would, would be exactly what we'd be doing, meeting for the sake of meeting. And I know your time is valuable, ours is as well, and I want to be upfront with you on the last day of the year. Uh, you know, we have a lot of meetings with intentions, good intentions, but if the meeting is going to meet and not going to yield results, uh, we don't have the capacity for it to yield results, and I don't want to waste either of our times. But, uh, our public safety is here, uh, the, the chief of staff is here, I'm certain will apprise the mayor, the city attorney, uh, will certainly will be apprising them, I'm sure. Ms. Henderson is in attendance, uh, and I'm hopeful that during the 2020, they'll convene that meeting and some progress can be made. And I'm happy to see all of these young people here, uh, participating and engaging and monitoring, and, uh, I hope this incites your interest in government. And happy new year to all of you.
Mr. Clerk?
Dr. Holloway lived in District 1, just wanted to interact.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Joaquin Miller Holloway, Jr., and my address is 2206 Decroof Court, Mobile, Got a little visual for you. Everybody can see that?
Oh, yeah, we can see it in there.
Put it right here. Mayor Simpson, members of the Mobile City Council and others gathered here. We're going to talk about a topic that's a favorite of mine, trains. A mantra that I enjoy repeating is, "A train a day helps keep the doctor away," with an exception being those who may have a PhD degree, not an MD. This afternoon, I will briefly discuss the value of motivation. On the point of every train, an engine is known as the locomotive, with the root word being motive. For your information, the trains that were all powered by big puffing steam engines use external combustion, a firebox, or external motivation, versus diesel engines, which all use internal combustion or internal motivation. Well, with the possibility of trains seen between New Orleans, Louisiana, and Mobile, Alabama, being a major focus of discussions today and in the future, I understand, I trust that the final decision will be based on the importance of internal motivation that will have an impact on the long-range plan for the growth and development of this area and not only external motivators. We need not be short-sighted by thinking just about the present, but we need to imagine the benefits that could result in the future by doing our share along with the other two states that are already all aboard in connection with this very vital railroad link along our unique coastal route. Since timing is everything, let me suggest that before you leave this building today, please examine my artistic exhibit in the atrium, which features four colored photographs and three model trains. One of them has an Amtrak locomotive of the type that might motivate a consist on the rails along this Gulf Coast corridor from here to there. Also, while you are in this section of town, take a trip to the Gulf Coast Explorium to see the large, operating 18-foot by 24-foot HO scale layout upstairs. Several photographs, which were shared with me online by a member of this audience, who was on the Amtrak inspection train that ran from New Orleans, Louisiana, through Mobile, also sometimes called LA, or just for fun, Lower Alabama, to Jacksonville, Florida, on February the 18th, 2016, have been distributed to each council member. Those pictures should enable those of you who did not ride the train to experience a precarious trip on a train that will be a valuable and worthwhile project to consider. Finally, I would like to announce that on the 28th of December, I celebrated my 82nd date of birth, and in my collection of trains, I spent an old '27 Union Pacific Passenger Train that I received as a Christmas present when I was four years old. That train still runs if the tracks are properly arranged. Hopefully, we, we will do all that we can to make sure that the tracks are properly arranged as plans are being made to revive passenger travel that will allow us to view various sites at C S E A level. Thanks for your attention related to this matter, and remember, I am anxious to be involved, so please feel free to contact me if necessary. And Mrs. Lambert has a copy of my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance is held over 28042, ordinance to establish a Blue Ribbon Affordable Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Commission of the City of Mobile.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved to second. Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Uh, I'm going to amend on this particular one to remove that each council person has two representatives. They would only have one representative. And I also would like to amend that the president of the council shall appoint two additional members, um, to this, um, to this, um, particular board. Uh, one, that they must live in the, uh, participate in the Mobile Public Housing Board. One member lives in public housing itself, and the other member live in session eight house.
Second. In proper motion and second on this amendment. Any discussion?
Yeah, and the reason is that because we had a committed meeting a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, we had many citizens that came from other housing, expressed concerns about their voices have not been heard, especially at the Mobile Housing Board. And so this is our opportunity for them to have a voice in the future of the Mobile Public Housing Board and the future of Mobile Housing, um, period. Thank, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will go back to the item as amended, as been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have passes.
Madam Clerk, if, if you could, uh, work with one of our attorneys and get a clean copy of the ordinance, uh, because I would like to, uh, use the ordinance when I, I'm going to ask, uh, my constituents or volunteers to serve on this committee, and I'd like to be able to attach the ordinance to it.
Yeah, but that's a good idea for all of us, yeah. Okay.
And, and I'd ask members of the council, uh, I know we regularly make appointments to various boards, ordinance, I mean, uh, boards, authorities, and commissions, uh, I'd ask that we would pay special and close attention to who we appoint to this particular one, so that we can get a work product out of it that really will yield some results. And if we could make that appointment, uh, as quickly as, as we can, but also paying attention to who we would appoint. We've already voted, right?
Yes.
Great. Uh, yes, ma'am. Madam Secretary.
Ordinance 88044, ordinance deeming a 60 by 60 parcel within Lot 2 of Noah Subdivision not now needed for public or municipal purposes and authorizing the transfer to the Mobile County Emergency Management Agency.
Second.
Probably moved to second. Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions held over 489760, class structure at 2757 pages lane, uh, public nuisance and order it demolished. 371060, recommended approval of the DBC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine offering is only licensed for Spring Hill Food Mart on Spring Hill Avenue. 211140, authorized contract with Hunter Security for fire alarm installations at Tardy Cottage, Quigley House, Oakley House, and Richards D A R House.
Second. Well, colleagues, I'm going to need to lay 371060 over for one, one week. Uh, I've been, I've been trying to reach the proprietors of Spring Hill Food Market. Uh, it's clear that they don't want to sell alcohol because they won't reach me back. But until I've talked with you, it's going to continue to be laid over. And I'm not singling them out. This is the posture that we have with every applicant, uh, for a particular reason in my district. And so if, if you're interested in securing a, uh, uh, this particular approval, please reach out to my office. I'm ready to meet with you.
Okay, so let's take the, let's take 976 and 1140, and then go back to the other. And we already have the motion and a second for those two.
Any further discussion? So we land both of those over one week?
No, we're just going to go to 976 and 1140 to vote. It has a motion and a second.
Wonderful. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have passes.
And now 371060.
Motion over for one week.
Second.
Probably moved to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
601147, authorized letter of support to the U.S. Department of Transportation for the grant application of the Southern Railroad Commission to restore passenger rail service.
So move.
No.
I think we'll land over.
Land over January 28th.
January 28th.
Second.
Probably moved to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions held, held over. If there are no objections, I'll take all of these. 081141, approved purchase order of Drive Cam Enterprise and Fleet Annual License Subscription. 081142, approved the purchase order for law enforcement software annual license subscription. 091143, allocate money of unallocated funds in the convention center fund for convention center repair and maintenance projects.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 02045 through 64046.
By council rule, these orders will be laid over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, 011148 through 601167.
Motion to suspend the rule for immediate consideration for consent resolution, 01-dash-1148 through?
1156.
Yes, 601167.
Second.
That was going to be held out, 1156.
1156 is going to hold out.
And 1156, so we're going to go 1148 through 1156, and 1167 will be laid over one week by council.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
011148, authorized limitation of use of City of Mobile-owned properties known as Tricentennial Park to close out certain reimbursable grant agreement with a DECA.
So move.
Second.
Okay.
031149, reappoint Greg Reynolds to Reappoint Greg Reynolds to the History Museum of Mobile Board. Zero-eight eleven-fifty. Approved issuance of fuel purchaser. Zero-nine eleven-fifty-one. Reallocate funds from Naperville Priority Projects District Five to CIP. Twenty-twenty res servicing project. Zero-nine eleven-fifty-two and fifty-three are determining contributions to Village of Spring Hill and Matri Dolphins Youth Sports serves a public purpose and approved payment. Thirty-one eleven-fifty-four. Authorized grant application to the Mobile Kennel Club for the MPD K-9 unit. Thirty-seven eleven-fifty-five and eleven-fifty-six are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine on off premise license for Arroy Thai Cuisine and for lounge retail liquor license for Celebrity Lounge on Naperville Road.
So move.
Second. Probably move to second and a discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item approved.
CIP resolutions being introduced. Twenty-one eleven-fifty-seven through twenty-one eleven-fifty-nine.
Motion to suspend the rule for immediate consideration for CIP resolution twenty-one dash eleven-fifty-seven and twenty-one dash eleven-fifty-eight and twenty-one dash eleven-fifty-nine will be held over one week by council rules.
Second. Probably move to second and a discussion?
Give me one second. Why would fifty-eight stay?
You got a contract over one of five, which is going to be held over?
Hundred eighty-five thousand?
It's going to be held over one week.
He laid over the last two.
Oh, you laid, I misunderstood completely. I'm sorry.
Called him out to lay him over.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Motion, sir. Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one eleven-fifty-seven. Authorized contract with Neil Schaefer for Trinity Gardens area, twenty-eighteen Street and Drainage Improvements Construction Inspection, Wausau Avenue.
So move.
Second.
Probably move to second and a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution is being introduced for the first time. Zero-eight eleven-sixty through twenty-one eleven-six-six.
By council rule, the resolution will be laid over for one week.
Announcements?
Thank you. First, I'd like to announce that the towing ordinance is not prepared, so the meeting that was scheduled for next week at two o'clock, or yes, two o'clock, which was January seventh, will be moved to January twenty-first. Again, the towing ordinance is not prepared and needs to be reviewed by City Legal, is my understanding. And so in order to get this out to the industry, we wanted to have it before the committee meeting, and it's not available. So this meeting will not take place again to the twenty-first at two, we'll call it for two o'clock on the twenty-first, which is a Tuesday, and that will be on the ninth floor. Also, January fourteenth, which had announced for the first committee meeting of the PJ Rollback Ad Hoc Committee, I hope that all council members will be available, and of course, administration and the county commissioners and any interested individuals to attend that meeting as well, open to the public. We'll do that for two o'clock on the fourteenth of January. Like to wish everybody a very Happy New Year, and be safe and enjoy yourself, whether it's downtown or out and about. Just, again, I hope that all your dreams and all your goals are fulfilled in the upcoming year. Happy New Year to all. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's gone.
Ms. Gregory.
Thank you. A couple of things going on. At our last meeting, I talked about the Athie Road Community Action Group and the fact that they had done a lot of work recently using grant money from Commissioner Hudson's Love Your Community Program. They put in yusad, some flowers, and also some small ziggler palms to help improve the appearance of their neighborhood entrance. Well, I got a text over the weekend, and someone about two or three days after all the work had been done, had gone in and dug up some of the flowers and stole the palm trees. So, you know, it's very frustrating and infuriating that people do what they can to make improvements to their neighborhoods, and then someone comes right along behind them and tears it up. So I've told the folks in the neighborhood to get back with me, and we will try to work out a way to put in some plants that are more mature, heavier duty. Maybe we have to find some cement or chains or something to keep these things in place, but we will try to redo and make it better. So again, it's just, you know, it's something that keeps happening. You know, it's the same thing with litter. We see litter. I have community service workers come out and pick up litter all up and down Ziegler Boulevard. Two days later, it looks just as trashy as it did before. You know, it's one of those things we have to take, we have to be respectful and take pride in where we live, and that's just not happening in some of these neighborhoods. And it's just really sad. The other thing, some good news. The work on Ziegler will begin soon. We'll see some signs going up to alert neighbors that the, from Cody to Schillinger will begin soon. So for anyone who has that route back and forth every day, just aware that work will be happening on that phase of the project that will start before the second phase. So again, signs will go up first. We'll see probably some more utility and prep work before the actual construction begins. So just look forward to seeing the Ziegler work start. It has been a very, very long time coming, but it is actually going to happen. Of course, I'll be standing out there when I see the first bulldozer, you know, jumping up and down, because it has seemed like it would never get going. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight is the night for the Mobile's New Year's Eve celebration, culminating with the moon pie drop at twelve o'clock. We have exciting activities planned for tonight. It's going to start at around eight o'clock. We're going to be at the Riverview Plaza Hotel. We'll have a live band there around eight o'clock on the outside. And then they're going to play too until around eight-thirty, where we, the mayor and I are going to go onstage, and we're going to cut the worst, largest edible moon pie. It's been trucked in by a transfer truck from the Moon Pie Factory in Chattanooga, Tennessee. It's already here, and it's going to be on, onto the stage, and we're going to cut it at eight-thirty. Normally, we have four or five thousand people out there waiting to eat some of that moon pie. While all of this is going on, a band will be playing, and then we're going to have a costume judging contest while we're onstage. And when it's the costume judging contest, we're going to have a street parade. We'll have our umbrellas out. The mayor and I are going to lead this parade. The Port City First Liners marching band will be playing the music for us, and we're going to march down the street to the main stage at St. Joseph and St. Francis. And then we are going to take to the stage around nine o'clock, and we're going to have some announcements. The mayor and I are going to welcome the crowd there and thank the sponsors. And then a local band will take over. From what I understand, that this local band is an outstanding band. Local band is going to take over, and this local band is going to play until around ten-thirty. Around ten-thirty, we're going to have this award-winning rock band, Collective Soul. And by the way, they will be celebrating their twenty-fifth anniversary here in Mobile, Alabama. So each year, to make sure that we switch the genres up, we don't have the same, we don't play the same kind of music every year. This year, this is a rock band, and for, and we expect people to come from foreign, to hit this band, and the next year, we switch to another kind of band, so that we have music for all of our citizens. And this band is going to play all the way up until twelve o'clock. And at twelve o'clock, we will have fireworks, laser light show, moon pie is going to drop. It's going to be exciting, and what I like, what I look forward to is that those people that are in these hotels, when it comes, when it get around eleven-thirty, a little after, they all want to be in place for, for the stroke of midnight. And we, we were hoping, and our hope came true. We have a clear night, moonlit, it's going to be a moonlit sky, a little or no wind blowing. It's going to be a little chilly, but nothing like what we have had in the past. So we're looking for, we got great weather. It's going to be an exciting night. I think the hotels are already pretty much packed out, but inviting everyone to please come out, inviting my council members to join us there, and let's have some fun in the center time zone. Nothing can preempt the moon pie drop. We have cornered the market in the entire center time zone. For Mobile, this is a premier event. Other than Mardi Gras, nothing would match the moon pie drop. It's going to be a great night tonight. Come out and enjoy yourself. You know how much it's going to cost you for all of this? Nothing. And you also can go to Bel Air, get on the, on the city bus line, ride down to Mardi Gras Park, and they will continuously drive, make that round. You can leave your car tomorrow, come on down, get off. On the scene, when you get ready to go back, just go back up to Mardi Gras Park, get back on the bus, head back to the malls. We're making it convenient for everybody to come down. No excuses. I can't park, too many people. No, leave your car tomorrow, get on the bus, and let's roll. Looking forward to seeing all of y'all. Looking forward to a good night tonight.
Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last, what is it, year, twenty-nineteen, we had some challenges throughout the district. But one thing I can say, that the good has outweighed the bad. We have many things to be grateful for for twenty-nineteen, from drainage projects, from walking trails being put in down, from streets being paved, et cetera. And twenty-twenty going to be even better and brighter for District Three. Even for the next week agenda, we almost have four hundred thousand dollars that's going to, into Tremere Park and also Duval, Street Duval Park next week. Those two parks have really been neglected years, years, for years. And beginning of next year, we're looking to do work there. And one of the best projects I'm looking for for next year is Baltimore Street. That street has not been touched in over fifty years. If you drive down that street, it's almost like a natural speed bump. You're going to have no choice but to slow down on that particular street. And looking in the beginning of the spring of the year, we are looking to re-revise Baltimore Street. And that is my heart, is to make sure that that is done before I leave this seat, this council seat, and looking forward to doing that on next year. Again, we have so much to be grateful for, and we have more things to be grateful for for the next coming up year. I'd like to wish all the citizens of District Three, my colleagues on the council, the city clerk and her staff and administration, and the mayor, a very happy and safe New Year, and looking forward to working with you all on next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Page, no one else?
Okay. Well, I want to pretty well mirror the announcement from Councilman Small, in just saying that there are a lot of exciting items and initiatives taking place in District Two. Everywhere you turn, there's progress. And with progress comes the need for more patience. I know as you travel up and down Broad Street, Spring Hill Avenue, pretty soon Dr. Margaret King Jr. Avenue, you will need to tap into that patience, but it will bring progress. And I'm just excited about twenty twenty as I can be. The future of this city is as bright as the sun in my estimation. Anyone who would tell me that inaction we take or don't take is going to limit this city's potential, I discredit that, because for three hundred and some odd years, we've been a great city, and if the good Lord allows us to for three hundred and some odd more, we'll be an even greater city. And so I'm excited about twenty twenty. Want to wish all of my colleagues, all of our, the city clerk, and Ms. Mary Ann, and Ms. Laura, and to Ms. Deidre, and to Mary and Steinfels, want all of you all to have a very happy New Year, productive New Year. I hope this twenty twenty, this next year, to yield perfect vision. I hope it's one that all of us can look back on and say was a milestone progressive year, not only collectively as a city, but individually. And I hope the moon pie drop, which is held in the greatest district in this city, District Two, only district capable of holding it, is District Two. So to put that out there. I hope it's a wonderful success, as it always has been. And I will not be attending tonight. I will be, we're going to start a fellowship, a gathering of the saints. St. Joseph Whistler will be at St. Joseph Mobile for our watch night service, and I'll be bringing the message. I look forward to that. We just have so much to be thankful for as a city, and I'm grateful to be a part of it. I want to thank all of the residents of District Two. I hope you have a very happy and prosperous New Year. Celebrate responsibly. If you get out of order, the police department is ready to take you downtown. Celebrate responsibly. If you're going to have you some strong Kool-Aid, stay at the house. Don't drink and drive. Celebrate responsibly. We don't want to see you on God-busting, because people are watching. Any further announcements? Did I hear a motion? Any announcements from the administration? I want to make a note. I want to make a note. Councilman CJ Small and myself and Councilman Fred Richardson just happen to be black. We just happen to be black. But I notice, and it's not just one particular paper, it's all of them. Anytime we happen to have an opinion that's in alignment, we're categorized as the black council people. I never see that happen to my colleagues on the other side. You'll never read the four white council persons. It's very rarely, very rarely that you see that, Joe. Very rarely. It's always separated and segregated. Everyone understands our ethnicity, and I'm hopeful as we go into twenty twenty, that won't be necessary. I admit, I confess, I'm guilty that I am black. I am African-American. No, I'm not quite black, yet, brown. And so I'm hopeful that as we cross this bridge into this new decade, brand-new year, that that won't be necessary, because why should it matter? And so any further announcements from members of this council? Happy New Year. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Probably move to second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lena Jones?